Buenos, en half a day. Many of God's blessings to all of you in here this afternoon. The, this hearing is called to order. It is now 2:03 PM. For the record, and in accordance with 5 GCA Chapter 8 Subsection 8107, public hearing notices were sent on Tuesday, April 5th, adhering to the five-day notice, and a second public hearing notice on Friday, April 8th, 2022, 48 hours prior. In addition, colleagues and ladies and gentlemen, this hearing was noticed on the legislature's website, Written testimonies may be submitted by emailing senator munya barnes at guamlegislature.org, or you may hand-deliver it to our office at 163 Chalan Santo Papa Hagatnya Guam, 96910. On the agenda, ladies and gentlemen, we have Resolution Number 300-36 LS, as introduced by myself and Senator Frank Blush Jr. It's relative to supporting the Republic of China Taiwan's participation as observer at the World Health Organization's 75th Health Assembly, and to reaffirm support for the Republic of China Taiwan's participation as an observer in the international organizations. Joining me here this afternoon are Minority Leader Senator Chris Duñez, Senator, thank you, Senator Frank Blush, Senator Tony Ada, and then Senator Telo Tadegui. Thank you for joining me, colleagues, this afternoon. Before we proceed with the discussion, I would like first to provide some general rules of conduct for all who are in attendance. The conduct of this hearing shall be as follows. The Chair will invite individuals who have signed up to testify. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the Chair before speaking and shall state their name for the record purposes. And the order of questioning will begin with the panel of senators. Each member will be allowed to post a question to an individual testifying for a round, and will be provided another round if needed. Questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. Personal inferences as to the character or the motive of any senator or any individual testifying is not permitted. Any violations of this general rule of conduct will result in removal of the public hearing room. And with that being said, we will move on the first item of the agenda, Resolution 300-36 LS, as introduced by myself, Tina Rose Munya Barnes, and Senator Frank Blush Jr. I introduce this resolution, ladies and gentlemen, again to reaffirm Guam's support of the Republic of China Taiwan to participate meaningfully at international stakeholder meetings. Hundreds of countries, parliamentarians and legislatures in the U.S. and around the world continue to stand behind Taiwan to participate at the World Health Assembly hosted by the World Health Organization. It's unfortunate that Taiwan still was not invited. Throughout the pandemic, Taiwan showed that they want to help and are willing to help the international community by sharing some of their successes to the world. Taiwan proves that they are able to manage healthcare emergencies effectively, and during a surge of infections, they brought down new infections to zero quickly in a matter of months. Moreover, Taiwan stepped in to aid the people of Guam and our medical community. Their expertise fills gaps in our healthcare coverage, and Guam maintains referral hospital agreements with many hospitals in Taiwan. We are very appreciative of their assistance to our island and our people. As international leaders in various industries, we know Taiwan can be of great assistance in our international community. More importantly, Taiwan should be kept abreast of valuable information during these meetings as serious global stakeholders and to foster greater collaboration and peace in the region. It is important that they be given seats at the international meetings like the International Civil Aviation Organization, the United Nations Framework Convention on Climate Change, and the International Criminal Police Organization. In Guam's commitment to our nearly 50-year sister-city relationship with Taipei and now our new sister-city relationship with Taoyuan and Taichung, we hope to continue to support the Republic of China's participation at international stakeholder meetings. Sítos Masi, thank you. We will now open the floor to our folks here to testify. At this time, we have Gary Wang from the TECO office here on our island. He did not checkmark to present oral testimony, but he is in support of this resolution and will answer any questions from my colleagues. So with that being said, thank you, Mr. Gary Wang, for being here. And at this time, I would, Minority Leader, if I can yield to the co-author, if I can yield to the co-author, Senator Blush, to start, and then I will yield to you and then move on. Thank you. Senator Blush, brother, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Vice Speaker. And, sir, welcome to the People's House. Madam Vice Speaker, thank you very much for the privilege and the honor of being able to once again co-sponsor a resolution in support of the Republic of China Taiwan's participation as an observer of the World Health Organizations. In years past, I remember, over a decade ago, I can actually say this by now, actually being co-sponsored to, back then, the late Speaker Tony Ampinko and his continuing effort to be able to support Taiwan's effort for, with the World Health Organization, and that's where my introduction came from. I've had the privilege of being able to actually sponsor resolutions in support of that continuing effort, and I appreciate the ability, the honor, of being able to co-sponsor this. You know, Taiwan has, again, as has been stated, for 50 years, our relationship and the relationship that Taiwan has had with the world community and wanting to be able to participate and contribute to the well-being of the health in the world is outstanding, is tremendous, and it's very notable. We will continue this effort. I, you know, I think that, I won't speak for the body, but I'll speak for myself, that this is not going to be the last time, if necessary, to continue to support this. And so I am honored to be able to do the, to sponsor, co-sponsor this resolution, and I hope that this year there is, you know, some positive movement, you know, and being able to recognize, you know, Taiwan's continued participation. It's a longstanding one, but it's something that's well worth fighting. So, again, thank you for being here, to be able to. I don't have any questions of you. I just want to say that you have my full support in this. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Sítos Masi, Senator Blush. Minority Leader Senator Duñez, any comments?
Sítos Masi, Madam Chair. Much like last year, I certainly rise in support of Resolution 300-36 relative to supporting the Republic of China Taiwan's participation and observe it at the World Health Organization's 75th World Health Assembly. You know, Madam Chair, I don't have any questions for the good gentleman from TECO, but I just want to make an observation. It's pretty clear Taiwan's capability of really managing the coronavirus in the country of Taiwan, ROC, and they have really done remarkable in terms of the regional management of this worldwide pandemic. I think it's only fitting that they participate as an observer. I think that they have a lot of science and technology and management of the virus to continue to share with the World Health Organization. And I think right now, we're even seeing continuing varying degrees of how different countries are handling the BA2 variant. And yet, I believe Taiwan continues to be very resilient in terms of its management with over 25 million people in the country, island nation. And so I think that it's very fitting and very appropriate, Madam Vice Speaker, once again, to have introduced this resolution. And I hope, at this point, and I pray, that, you know, there will be a change of mind and a change of heart when it comes to recognizing Taiwan's capabilities and advancements in many fields, many areas, but particularly with regard to this virus and so, and others. I'm sure they have many other things that they can bring to the table in representing as an observer at WHO. So with that, Madam Chair, unless the gentleman cares to comment, aside from that, I think it's pretty obvious on the worldwide coverage of different outbreaks and the like, that Taiwan continues to be a leader in the region of being able to manage. And so the world can only benefit from their participation. And I want to thank the gentleman for being here to represent TECO and to receive our comments. But I certainly will be voting in the affirmative on this resolution, Madam Chair, and I thank you for the opportunity to share a few words. Sítos Masi.
Buenas, minority leader Senator Duñez. Before I go on to my next colleague, also joining us, ladies and gentlemen, is colleague Senator Joanne Brown. Thank you for coming in this afternoon. Senator Tony Ada, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Vice Speaker, for this opportunity to comment on Resolution 300-36. I am full support of this resolution to ensure that Taiwan becomes a participant, or at least an observer for the World Health Organizations coming up. You know, Taiwan has always been a part of our community here, both in technology and supplies and bringing medical technology and supplies to our local hospital. And I think that it just goes to show their commitment to keeping not just Taiwan safe, but also ensuring that here on Guam, that we have that capability to have the, what do they call it? The technology available to have our patients here well-cared-for and protective equipment as this coronavirus was very detrimental in the past year. So I fully support this, and I'll be voting in the affirmative for this resolution. Thank you, Madam Vice Speaker.
You're very welcome, Senator Ada. Senator Telo, please.
Sítos Masi, Madam Speaker, Madam Chair. Half a day, Mr. Wang, it's good to see you again. Thank you so much for being here, and I'd like to thank, you know, your office for always continuing to be a part of the community as well, you know. Been very, and I know you're very new. You just arrived, if I'm not mistaken, in the last month, I think so. But I'm sure you'll find that we're a very, very giving community, just like how Taiwan is, you know, coming to Guam and offering so many options for us to take part in that Taiwan has to offer. And I'm glad that one of the senators mentioned about the telecommunicate, or just Medicaid, healthcare initiatives. Looking forward to working with your office on telemedicine, which is very, very important, and all the things that you have to offer. I really appreciate it. Now, I know this is the same resolution that was, and if I'm not mistaken, Madam Chair, we introduced Resolution 324-35 last year, if I'm not mistaken, and that already passed and paid through, right? We already, so as you can see, Mr. Wang, you know, we are dedicated when it comes to Taiwan that every year, you know, or not every year, but at least every term, we try and put out this type of resolution to show our support toward Taiwan. And I think we'll continue to do that even in the next term. So, and welcome to Guam, you know, half a day. Xie xie. Thank you so much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Tadegui. Senator Brown, for a comment.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I certainly do support the resolution. As mentioned by our other colleagues, I mean, Taiwan has been a very good neighbor to the Pacific, certainly in terms of their presence and their contribution to the islands and the partnership that we obviously have shared with Taiwan for many years. So I certainly would be hopeful that WHO will consider having Taiwan sit an observer status. I know there's a bigger political issue with mainland China, that certainly the interest of mainland China and wanting to be the representative for China. And, you know, we certainly want Taiwan to continue to grow and continue to thrive and continue to be a good neighbor, as you have, not just to the Pacific, but also to the world. So, Madam Chair, I certainly support the resolution. There's much to contribute and much to share, and I don't think we lose anything with regards to that. Thank you. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Sítos Masi, Senator Brown. If there are no one else here to testify on this Resolution Number 300-36, it's relative to supporting the Republic of China Taiwan's participation as observer at the World Health Organization's 75th World Health Assembly and to reaffirm support for the Republic of China Taiwan's participation as an observer in international organization. It has been duly heard, and individuals who wish to submit testimony will have, can do so by emailing it to senator munya barnes at guamlegislature.org, or you may send or hand-deliver it to 163 Chalan Santo Papa Hagatnya Guam, 96910. So Resolution Number 300-36 LS has been duly heard by this body. The time right now for, we will recess for about a minute to get the other bill, I mean, the other item on the agenda in, and it's 2:21 PM. Thank you. Very, very brief recess. We'll bring Ms. Guerrero in, Mrs. Guerrero in. Buenos, en half a day, todo Samzu. This hearing by the Committee on Public Accountability, Human Resources, the Guam Build-Up, Hagatnya Revitalization, Regional Affairs, Public Library, Telecommunications and Technology is called to order. It is now 2:26 PM. And for the record, in accordance with 5 GCA Chapter 8 Subsection 8107, public hearing notices were sent on Tuesday, April 5th, 2022, adhering to the five-day notice, and a second public notice was sent on Friday, February 8th, 2022, 48 hours prior. In addition, this hearing was noticed on the legislature's website at www.guamlegislature.com. Ladies and gentlemen, written testimonies may be submitted by emailing senator munya barnes at guamlegislature.org, or you may hand-deliver it to our office at 163 Chalan Santo Papa Hagatnya Guam. On the agenda, ladies and gentlemen and colleagues, we have confirmation hearing on the board appointment of Mr. Francisco T. Guerrero to serve as a member of the Civil Service Commission for a term length of six years, October 21st, 2021 to September 30th, 2027, to fill the seat of Emilia F. Rice, whose term has expired. Joining me here this afternoon are the Minority Leader, Senator Duñez on my right, Senator Frank Blush Jr., Senator Tony Ada, Senator Joanne Brown, and Senator Telo Tadegui. Thank you, colleagues, for joining me here this afternoon. Before we proceed with the discussion, I would first like to provide some general rules of conduct for all who are in the attendance. The conduct of this hearing shall be as follows. The Chair will invite individuals who have signed up to testify. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the Chair before speaking and shall state their full name for the record purposes. The order of questioning will begin with the panel of senators. Each member will be allowed to post a question to an individual testifying for a round and will be provided another round if needed. Questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. Personal inference as to the character or the motive of any senator or any individual testifying is not permitted. Any violation of this general rule of conduct will result in removal from the meeting room. We will now open the floor to the first panel who have come to testify. When I recognize you, you may state your name for the record and begin your testimony. I do have a couple of login sheets, sign-in sheets here. A lot of folks, Mr. Guerrero, did come to support your efforts, and we also have some folks that are here to testify. So before I give you an opportunity, I will go ahead and hear for those who wish to testify about your appointment this afternoon. I will go ahead and start, I hope, with the Chairman, Mr. Juan Calvo, please. Please turn on the mic, Mr. Chair, por favor, or closer.
Oh, there he is, sorry. Okay, my name is Juan K. Calvo, Chairman of the Civil Service Commission. Honorable Colonel Munya Barnes, Speaker of the 35 Guam Legislature, Imina 35 Nalisletura Guam. I'm here in support of Mr. Francisco T. Guerrero as a member of the Civil Service Commission. And before I present my testimony, I would like also to acknowledge all the senators here. And I want to thank you for giving us this opportunity to hear this and to provide testimony before you. Madam Vice Speaker, buenos, en tanto, Sítos Masi. On February 23rd, 2022, pursuant to the Organic Act of Guam and Guam laws, in Magahaga Guam, due this A. Long Guerrero, appointed Mr. Francisco T. Guerrero to fill the Civil Service Commission Board vacancy, formerly occupied by Emilia F. Rice, whose term has expired. Under 4 GCA, Guam Code Annotated, Subsection 4401, the Commission is required to have up to seven board members to carry out its duties and responsibility. Currently, the Commission has five active board members who dedicate their time and service and expertise to hear and adjudicate cases or administrative cases such as adverse action, employee's grievance appeal, post-audit investigation, mini-hatchback issues, which is a political activities, Equal Employment Opportunity Act, also known as EEO, Employee Protection Act, whistleblower, and other administrative matters. The appointment and acceptance of Francisco T. Guerrero as a board member will secure four affirmative vote, as required by law, and furthermore, minimize any disruption of scheduled hearing of cases held before the Commission. Mr. Guerrero's employment background in the military and private sectors will be an asset to the Commission and its mission. His experience, abilities, and skills earned in the military service, together with professional achievement and involvement in the private organization such as President, 2005 President, and Member of the Rotary Club, International Rotary in Singapore, Manila, Japan, Chamber of Commerce, Guam Hotel Restaurant Association, et cetera, were significant factors in the managerial and human relations scale, which ensure fair and appropriate perspective to issues accountable to hear, review, and analyze all facts relating to employment cases. Employment cases are governed by federal and local statute, personal rules and regulations, policies and procedures as mandated under the merit system under the Organic Act of Guam. As a Chairman of the Commission, I humbly ask this legislature to confirm Mr. Francisco T. Guerrero as a member of the Civil Service Commission Board. And should you have any question, I'll be more than happy to answer. En tanto, Sítos Masi. question, I'd be more than happy to answer. Senang Clu, that is the smart city, para todos.
Buen provecho, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Calvo. I'll go ahead and yield to the Saina, Priscilla Tunca. Consigue amor, por favor.
Tu namin sahi pabena, pan, pabena tu la mtsu, jagos precisu. Pan malago da pa'wa, esta maui.
Pa'wa, por favor.
La zapu de estina commission, I know, Madam Speaker. Ti man mimiting han, na inkeki alegra i departamento ni problema zan i impiau. Dispensa. Kadaman matwan man matso tsu, ti una hora, ti dos horas, guan a tres horas, guan a cuatro horas un byay. Zalelikunai na ti tsumilung i sweddu, zan i tseso. Fuera di adzii ben fan mata tsung gi, gi commission for two, three hours. Entzitsili i tseso, man ahonan gi gu ma momi, den tzitsili i tseso gi fesina. Sa guan a taiguina pinit botna ipa ben taitai. Zati adzwa gua xa post-audit, guan no motion hearing. Inta titidi a reglamento ni koti na procedure pa'wa gi commission. Ista ba ta'zwa no adro ton ma mina para ben adresa emerit of the case, that's it, lo pa'wa. Gua post-hearing audit, gua motion hearing. Bula, bula klofsi zat si no sangam fesina tomorrow. Pues, hunga adzwa fan samagah heres tiu sa sangan zacausina, causina in apreba. Zan na la tat kilo fan isweddu ma xa para fan gas, sa gus gua guan i gas. Si tu smasi.
Buen provecho, Director Tunca. Mr. Leon Guerrero?
Hello? Testing, one, two, three. Hello, my name is Daniel Young-Guerra. I am the executive director of the Civil Service Commission. I am very honored and privileged to be here in front of the Committee on Public Accountability, Human Resources, Guam buildup, Hagatnia revitalization, regional affairs, public libraries, telecommunications, and technology. Thank you, Vice Speaker Tina Munia Barnes, Senator Brown, Senator Tadegui, Senator Ada, Senator Blas. Did I miss somebody? And Senator Duñez also, thank you. I just want to say that it's very important that we get another board member in order to fulfill our mission for the Civil Service Commission. It's, we are very quiet and we do our work as well as we can and stuff. And I think Mr. Guerrero's background is something that would give us an extra, extra independent view of things when he does get confirmed, and I look forward to it. Mr. Francisco Guerrero served thirty-two years in the U. S. Army Special Forces Green Beret. He was a, he specialized as a Special Forces Senior Sergeant and Command Sergeant Major. He was awarded the Vietnam Bronze Valor Device Award, Vietnam Service Medal, Sharpshooter Marksman Expert Combat Infantry Badge, Halo-John Master Certified, Underwater Scuba and Pathfinder Qualified Special Forces Green Beret. In the private sector, Mr. Guerrero also served, I believe, in six years as Assistant General Manager for Operations, Director of Training and Development for Landline Tours and Transportation, and about twenty-six years in the Guam tourist industry. He was awarded the Paul Harris Fellow Recognition. He was also recognized by the tourist industry by, for his twenty-six years in the tourism industry by Guam Visitors Bureau. He was also the past president and member of the Rotary Guam Club, International Rotary Singapore, Manila, and Tokyo, member of the Guam Hotel and the Roya Sturan Association Guam Chamber of Commerce, lifetime member, and Special Forces Decade. Mr. Guerrero also earned an Associate's Degree in General Management at El Paso, Texas Community College. I believe that Mr. Guerrero's military and tourist industry will bring an exceptional perception to the Civil Service Commission Board. I therefore support the confirmation of Mr. Francisco T. Guerrero. Undanglu, that is the smart city.
Buen provecho, Mr. Director, Mr. Leon Guerrero. Before I give the floor to Mr. Francisco Guerrero to speak, I want to note for the record that we did get a written testimony from Mr. Joseph Bill Borja, who shares his support, Mr. Robert C. Titino, who is here in support of, Mr. John Smith, his support of, Anthony Beneventi in support of, Roland Farren in support of, and we have Janique El Sagun in support of, Christine Canata in support of, and of course, this beautiful wife, Ms. Lily, in support of. And then I think, this looks like a Jake, Jake Los, or Oz, he's in support of. So I just want to make sure that I note that for the record, that all these folks are outside but in here to support Mr. Guerrero. So at this time, I will ask Mr. Guerrero, please, you have the floor. Si tu smasi. Consigue amor.
Okay, thank you, Madam Vice Chairman, Speaker. And it is very interesting, and I'm really surprised and really appreciative of the comments that's been made by some of these people supporting my confirmation. Instead of taking your valuable time, let me just kind of, since we already got or heard a lot of people supporting, and that's great, but let me just say my part here, and it's going to be just almost a minute, because I know that you guys have listened to a lot of testimony that are written and all that, and half the time, we don't look at the person's face when he's talking to you all. But let me just read this one little area, the last part of my what I wrote, and I hope that that would be sufficient enough for you to make your decision. Yes, the leadership character that I have, as well as my central military work, experience, and membership, I believe will be beneficial to my role, to my role as a Civil Service Commission Board Member. I recognize that this position comes with a great deal of responsibility and critical duty to undertake with integrity and impartiality. Some of the most important principles I followed throughout the, my career, personal life, and while serving my country. These are the things that I just talked about. And although this is my first direct affiliation with the government of Guam, my career in the military and private sector affords me an advantage of objectivity, and I am confident and prepared to serve if given the opportunity to uphold the Civil Service Commission standard as a board member. In closing, I want to thank Vice Speaker Tina Munia Barnes, ma'am, thank you so much, and the committee members for inviting me to submit my testimony in consideration for the position on Civil Service Commission Board, Commission's Board, undanglu, that is the smart cities, and si tu us infan benendisi. Thank you so much for your opportunity of listening to me.
Thank you, Mr. Guerrero. At this time, I will open the floor to Minority Leader Senator Duñez for a comment or a question. Please proceed.
Si tu smasi, Madam Chair. Mr. Guerrero, thank you for being here. You certainly have distinguished support on this panel, as well as a lobby full of people who have come to support you, and I think that's a real testament to who you are and what your character has on display. Certainly, I can appreciate your extensive experience, particularly when it comes to serving our country. I know that I have three family members who are currently serving. I know the sacrifice that that takes, but I also know the discipline that's involved. I guess I only have, maybe I'll make a short comment, but just wanted to kind of give you some of the experience that I've had with these distinguished members, actually before us, with the exception of the Civil Service Director, and my experience at Civil Service, and just share with you. I know, of course, with your military background and that type of distinguished service, it's very, very clear and regimented in terms of the chain of command, disciplinary procedures and the like, without question. I just wondered if some of the members may have shared with you, or if you just, or maybe just give you an enlightenment of maybe what to expect sometimes when cases come before you, and that is the level of progressive discipline and other things that kind of are incorporated with how decisions are made and how cases are evaluated. I just wanted to see if you could share some insight on your thoughts on deliberating on those type of decisions that you'll be faced with.
Thank you. Unfortunately, I haven't had the opportunity to talk and interact with some of the members here, and I wish I had. I, I'm just, I feel as though I am very capable of listening with these folks that's going to be working with me, with you all in membership of the organization, with their information and my understanding of what they're trying to get, the message they're trying to get to me, I would be, what do you call it? I think I, I am very confident that I'll be able to carry out my responsibility, and I do thank you for asking those kind of questions. And like I said, I am sorry, I, you know, I never had the, I haven't had the chance to until just before we walk in, but it's, I think these people that I talked to in the short period of time that I've shared some ideas, I am very impressed with their thinking and thoughts, and I think we can do it. And I, I'm hoping that given the chance that I will be an assistance instead of an obstacle.
Sure. And I thank you for accepting the governor's nomination. It is, it is a difficult task, and it really, and it does, as has mentioned, Madam Priscilla, that it really takes, you know, it really is very involved, and so I commend you. I think you're going to bring a great deal of balance. I just wanted to take this opportunity to express to you that when management comes before you, when a grievance comes before you and other decisions that you're going to be presiding over, you know, that's, it's going to be quite different than the normal course of, of, you know, back and forth. But that's why I'm saying I think you're going to bring a great deal of balance with your, with your history and with your service. And I'm proud that this board is going to, I believe, have the services of a gentleman like you that has that experience, because that, that is what you're going to face a lot of times, is how management has managed to, you know, deal with disciplinary issues and other issues with the organization, and also how the structure is set up to respond to an employee and their presentation and their representation and a final disposition. You know, some of these cases may become before you more than once, and so you'll have a good view of what's going on. But I, for one, having looked through your record and have seen your distinguished career, I feel confident supporting you, Mr. Guerrero. So thank you for accepting the call to service.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Minority Leader. Senator Frank Blush, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Vice Speaker. Mr. Guerrero and the panel there, very distinguished. Thank you very much for being here. I'm very impressed, and quite honestly, that's not an accolade that I give to very many people. And one of the things that I've found very impressive, Commander Major, is not just your professional career, but also your community service. You have, you provide to this board also a well-rounded, you know, understanding, not just of what may be concerns in the private sector, in the business sector, but also in the community. And I see that as a great value for you. Also, I've known the people sitting around you for many years. I've known you, Mr. Guerrero, although we very rarely we spoke. I know of you from many different places, and I'm, thank you for stepping up and accepting the challenge. I do have one question.
I'm sorry?
I do have one question, though.
Sure.
Are you ready for this?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, that's the question. Are you, that's, that was my question. Are you ready for this? Because
Yes, sir.
Because you, you're stepping into, you know, an awesome, you know, responsibility. This is basically, this, this position helps to basically determine, you know, whether or not, you know, the fate of an employee or the fate of an agency based on the actions they've taken on an employee. That's a huge responsibility, you know. And like again, like I said, very rarely do I, do I provide the accolades that I'm, that I present, provide to you in that. Very impressive in this, and thank you for stepping up here. You answered my one question. That's all I needed, so that you've got my vote, okay?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're very welcome, Senator Blas. Senator Tony Ada, you are recognized at this time.
Thank you, Madam Vice Speaker. Mr. Guerrero, thank you for answering the call for the governor to step up and serve our community. Thank you also for your service to our country, both in war and peace. And I think that's what sets you apart from perhaps the other board members, is that you have that, you have that quality of being fair and just, being a commandsar and major of a brigade, battalion, and also in the private sector as a manager in the tourism industry. So you have that balance, and I think that being on the commission, that's what you need to move forward, is what is right and just for the employee, but most especially what is right and just for the governor in Guam. And to bring that balance to the commission, along with your other members, you'll be able to show your side of what it takes to be now a commissioner, aside from a commandsar major and a manager, right? So I thank you for accepting the call. And would your confirmation here and now fill the board completely, or is there other vacancies that are on the board?
I'm sorry, can you, can you just repeat the few words that you have just?
Is there, would your confirmation fill the vacancy of any, Madam Chair, is there any other vacancies on the board?
Mr. Chair, is there one more vacancy or this?
So there will be one more vacancy, so? So with this confirmation, you'll be able to make quorum, or you're still able to make quorum? So you'll be getting, I think, Mr. Guerrero, you'll be able to get up earlier again, like what you did in your army times, and study the package before you go to work. But I don't have no questions. I just thank you for your service to, you know, our country. Thank you for your service to the community, and now thank you for your service to our government. And I look forward to working together with you, and hopefully that, if you have any questions of us, please don't hesitate to ask. You can call on us, and hopefully we'll be able to help answer it. But thank you, thank you, Madam Chair, for this opportunity.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Telal Tadegui, you're recognized.
Si tu smasi, Madam Chair. First and foremost, Mr. Guerrero, thank you so much for serving your country. First and foremost, Mr. Guerrero, thank you so much for serving your country, and I, you know, my dad is retiree as well, and it just, it just brings a lot of good feelings inside, you know, especially to go through what you've had to go through, and it also gave you discipline, and I think military, my father, even though I wasn't in it, I felt like I was when my father would order, say, get up early in the morning to make our bed and stuff, but there's definitely discipline when it comes to being in the military. And then you're also, your background, being in Lam Lam Tours, you know, it's a very distinguished and reputable company here on this island, and very strict and very disciplined as well type of company. So I have no doubt that you have a lot of discipline in your life, and, you know, everyone is thanking you for serving this, this position at Civil Service. My question to you is, why do you want to serve at the Civil Service Commission?
I'm sorry, but can you just?
Why do you want to serve in this capacity?
Why do I want to serve?
At the Civil Service Commission?
I've always been that kind of person who wants to reach out to whoever needs help. If you feel that our commission here needs the kind of experience that I have, I'm more than happy to extend myself to do service for our community, and so I'm ready to serve again. I served 30 years defending this institution, this system that we have, and I'm ready to give you another 30 years if I could to serve this island. And is that the kind of answer you're kind of waiting for, or is it?
No, you can move it in front of you, the microphone in front of you a little bit more, so we can go. I know this mask is very difficult to, and I can't read lips, so. So in other words, you want to serve in this capacity just because you want to serve?
Yes, yes.
And you said, serve and help people? That's what you said, right?
The services to this community primarily, and of course, the communities consist of many, many, many different kinds of people with different thoughts and different views about life and all that, but does it, that difference doesn't make any difference to me in serving, because they're just as deserving of the very best that I can do to make their life a little bit better, if that's what it is that I need to do.
Well, along with serving, Mr. Guerrero, I think what's really important, too, is to look at your surroundings and where you're serving at, the Civil Service Commission itself, and those who are serving alongside you.
Yeah.
So would you have any issues if you saw something unethical or a conflict of interest? For an example, if there's a member, another Civil Service Commission member sitting on the board, who's actually listening to a case of a prior employment they were at, or anything that has to do that could provide a conflict of interest, are you willing to step up and call that out?
That's my responsibility. That is definitely what is expected of me, and that's what I'm going to do.
And are you, have you had any ethical courses taken?
Is there any what?
Have you taken any ethics courses?
No, but I've seen a lot of real-life experience that tells you which ethics area you need to be on. There's a lot of people that are very unethical, regardless of how they look and what they do.
Well, I think you'll have your opportunity, because I think that's one of the requirements, sitting on this commission, is that you take an ethics course that's provided to you, so.
Then I will take that into consideration, and if elected, I will certainly do my part in getting something that will enhance my knowledge and hopefully the performance of my job.
And I think just as important as ethics, you know, to follow the rules, it's morals that I'm really concerned about, especially in this position that you're going to be sitting in, taking on if you, if your nomination passes. There are a lot of things that, I mean, this particular position deals with individuals that can change their life, and if anything, it also can, you know, bring justice to those who have broken the law or the rules. And a lot of times, that comes with funding, you know, when somebody walks away from the Civil Service Commission and they're awarded a certain amount of money, but there was something not right there. I just hope you do speak your mind and that you're not a yes man to anybody, but to your morals and to your ethics. And I think being in the military this long and receiving some of these awards, I don't think you got there being a yes man. I think you got there because you have morals and ethics. This is a very important board to sit on, very important. So I hope you don't turn a blind eye at all, because many of us are watching what the Civil Service is doing, and will speak up. So I wish you the very best in this endeavor that you're taking, and appreciate you, actually, you and your family for allowing you to take this position, because it's not just you, your family needs to be there to support you as well, and I'd like to thank them for giving you the support you need to do this job, and to do one that provides justice to our people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Tidaway. Senator Brown, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Certainly, good afternoon to you, Mr. Guerrero. Certainly echo my colleagues' comments with regards to your credentials. It's very impressive. I also am the child of a military retiree, combat veteran in Vietnam, and of your generation, and I think a lot of the values that I have and the expectations I have of my own performance have been based on how I was raised, even though I myself, like Senator Tidaway, did not serve in the military. I have very mixed feelings, though, with regards to Guam Civil Service Commission. I don't hold it in the highest of regard, because I've been at the other end in management, presenting cases before the Civil Service Commission, and unfortunately, in some cases, the Civil Service Commission didn't follow the laws that affected cases that we had at an agency that I was a general manager of. And government of Guam is very political. It continues to be political, and I don't hold this whole idea of the merit system in high regard, because I've seen abuse of it, and I've seen abuse of the commission. I've seen commission members sit in meetings that have ethical conflicts and relationships with either the employee that's being brought forth or family members of the employee, and they themselves during those hearings never disclose that information, which is improper. So, you know, from my perspective now, being back as a lawmaker, I look at legislation on how do you shine the light on government operations, because I've seen abuse of government. And to accomplish what you have in your life, you have to work hard, you have to put in that effort. You don't always have to do that in the government of Guam. Some people kiss up to get the positions that they have, and they don't perform the work, and they abuse the opportunities that they are given, and I'm being as direct as I can, because I don't know any other way to be. It's that kind of misuse of public resource to me that's very disturbing. I've not made a habit in my life of having to kiss up, that's why I've worked very hard academically, the work that I do, I feel I'm a very responsible individual. I have an expectation that public servants that serve in the government also do the same. That's not the standard in the government of Guam, unfortunately. We encourage mediocrity. We don't always hold people responsible for misusing and abusing public resource, and that to me is very bothersome. We can talk about all this as if it's very nice, but it isn't. The reality, once you peel it back, once you peel back the onion, is not that. The Civil Service Commission has gone from one end of the pendulum of being very, you know, I guess, very stronghold with regards to holding employees accountable in their performance, to the other end of being extensively compassionate, that they look at the employee in terms of the individual rather than their role and what they did or what they didn't do properly. You know, I thought all I have to do if I ever got in trouble is make sure I cry a few tears, tell the commission members that I have a family to support, and hopefully they're going to let me go. But when that represents millions of dollars of public money that is being paid back or abused, of public taxpayer money, I have a problem with that, and I have no problem holding people accountable for their performance. But the government doesn't run that way, so I'm very curious from your perspective, knowing that you yourself, to accomplish all that you have in your life requires discipline, requires responsibility, requires an awful lot of hard work, and I'm sure that's a standard not necessarily anybody imposes on you, that has to come from you as the individual. That's how you succeed. So how do you, how are you going to contribute to that process with regards to your role on the commission as you view cases that come before you? Because even to get there, before a case even gets to the Civil Service Commission, that's assuming it even gets through the internal politics of the department or agency that it came from. How are you going to look in making decisions? Because some of your colleagues are very, I wouldn't say, they don't look at things the same way. And if I'm going to believe that phone calls aren't made and influences don't happen, I don't believe it. I've spent many years, you know, I was born on Guam, I've lived here most of my life, and I've been in government for 33, going on 34 years. So I'd like to think everything's on the up and up, but most of the time, it's not, and I'm disturbed. I read an article in the Pacific Times recently that alleges that the legal counsel for the Civil Service Commission had communicated with one of the board members during the meeting privately whispering, when public meetings require public discussion and open discussion, especially if it involves a case or legal advice that's being provided at these type of meetings, unless it's something so sensitive that, you know, it goes under the, it's not part of the Open Government Act, but I know I'm saying a lot, but I think you understand my point of exactly what I'm getting to. What are your views, and how do you think you're going to contribute to that, or how should we have confidence that how you make your decisions is going to be on that standard to protect the public interest? Because to me, that is more important than the government and more important than the individual employee.
Now, are you asking me this question about my take on what you just said?
Yes, or your take on what I just said? Yes, definitely.
Well, you know, I think we'll, I understand that in any organization, there's rules and regulations that needs to be adhered to, and I understand also that we're all human beings, we make mistakes, and so you have to take the balance, some kind of balance. What you don't want to compromise is the integrity of the organization that you're working for. And so you just, I feel that whatever the problem is that's being brought to us, we need to all look at it objectively, discuss this kind of problem amongst our members of the commission, and hopefully come to an agreement as to how to best take care or address this problem, and I'm not sure if I missed the target here.
Well, with regards to decisions that are made, I mean, obviously, if an employee has come before the commission, something has transpired. Decisions were made by management, for example, if it's a suspension or a termination of an employee. So there's a process under which obviously that individual or individuals come before you in the commission. How do you look at that? Because you're really second-guessing the decision of management that is making a decision. I'm sure in your career, obviously, you've been in a decision-making position overseeing personnel, and obviously, you've also had the responsibility of making sure a mission is accomplished. We're all there for a reason. We're not there to take up space and gossip all day and braid each other's hair. We have a job to do. And so if that is not being properly addressed by an employee, what is it? Because right now, to me, I don't think we send out that message of responsibility. We let a lot of stuff slide in this government, we really do, and we think we're being caring and compassionate, but sometimes we're doing more damage to the job and the mission that we're supposed to represent.
Well, you know, I truly believe that if there's a problem, we need to address it, no matter what, and whether or not we like to talk about it or not, we have to kind of force ourselves to address what is being brought to our attention and address that in all fairness to the individual concerned. And I think that's the important part of the process here, is that, number one, you have to be timely in doing this, because there are rules and regulations that determines the action and what kind of suspense date that you need to do to me, and that's not fair. If you start breaking the rules, then it's not fair, not only to the individual person involved, but to the government that you're working for. And so those kind of stuff, ma'am, is, are important. You have to address, you have to work with the people that you're working with who would open heart and good understanding of your surrounding and the environment that we're faced, that we're in, the situation of the people that you're going to be dealing with with regards to whatever complaint or whatever it is that we're dealing, and you have to be fair. And unfortunately, fairness sometimes does not, does not end with in favor of the person who's the subject, but hopefully fairness is going to prevail regardless of who benefits.
And Senator Telo would ask you, because there's always influence. I'd like to believe commission members aren't engaged with, but that's not the case. I think if we keep going the way we are with government, eventually, there's going to be so many eyes and ears out there, that's going to be very hard in the future for public officials to hide, quite simply because I think the more light we shed on the government, the harder it is for these type of things to happen. With regards to your own personal philosophy as you make decisions, what primarily are you looking to represent in your role in sitting in the commission? What do you believe you're bringing to the commission?
What am I what?
What do you believe you're bringing to the commission by your involvement or your presence? What is your, what asset are you bringing that you think is going to be a benefit to the public?
What am I bringing to, with me that will benefit the commission here?
No, the public. The commission to me is not the priority. My concern and what I-
The community?
What I think has been overlooked too often is really the role when we're in a respective, because you've never worked for the government, I assume. Never been an employee of the government, have you?
Not for government of Guam.
So you've never probably really had a, do you have any gauge of the political?
I am involved in politics.
Environment sometimes that exists in the work environment?
Yeah.
I mean, that's why, and I'm not saying that is a bad thing, that may be a very good thing, that you're not influenced by that or not experienced in that.
I think I'm still missing your point, but here's what I'm going to say. Whatever the responsibility that's given to me, I will do those, carry out those responsibilities to the best of my ability. It doesn't mean that I'm going to be kind of a little bit open for consideration for certain people and others, and we're always going to, we're always going to be faced with problems.
Sure.
And these are the people that's going to help me, help the people that are actually involved in coming out with a solution to the problem, and not be narrow-minded and think you've got all the answers in the world, because it involves whatever the result of your action is going to affect people. And that's what I'm trying to say here, regardless of what the problem may be. Firstly, if there's a problem, internal problem, we have to fix that, and if we need help, we have to reach out to the source of the help that we can, so that we can carry out this commission the way it should be. Now, we need to kind of just, I don't believe in party system, I don't, because that's what the military teaches me, that that's, there's no favoritism in what we do, we have to just do what we need to do to carry out and accomplish the mission, and so that's my priority, and not knowing all the details about the commission, I can say that we have responsibility to be very mindful and be knowledgeable about what the rules and regulations are for us to carry out our duties, and we have to be, and you have to be fair in anything that you have to do that involves or affects human beings, employees, families, the community. And so we have to be smart enough and make sure that we do not create any kind of problem internally so that it will affect the people that you're actually serving. And so if I missed the boat here, I'm so sorry.
I think what I'm trying to ask, Mr. Guerrero, it's not to me what's external to you, I want to know what your convictions are and what your principle is. What are your principles? What is your conviction in serving in this role? Because this is a little different.
What's my mission?
This actually involves determining or review of management decisions or employee decisions made with regards to work in the government of Guam, and whether or not these individuals, because what I've seen too often is we're looking more so at the individual than we do the mission, and it's at the expense of the mission, because we settle. I mean, it's not being uncaring or not being compassionate for individuals, but I also think individuals need to be held responsible when they've taken irresponsible, unethical, or illegal actions in this government that harm our community, especially when they're paid to do it. That's very bothersome to me. And a lot of the people in the community, it's a joke, isn't it? They're going to go to the commission, and they're going to promote them and give them a raise, and a lot of people feel that way. And a lot of people feel that way. They don't have a lot of faith, as I don't in some cases, with the commission. And some of us that have sat as department directors who've had to deal with the commission, because I don't walk in with a lot of confidence. And so, I want to know from your personal perspective, I don't doubt you're able, you know, with your background and your skill set to work with others. But what is your conviction? Why do you think you're going to be beneficial to serving in this role? Because right now, you're working for, you know, walking into a commission that a lot of people aren't very impressed with, even though you have extensively impressive credentials.
You know, once again, I think I'm a true believer in carrying out your responsibility, whether it's going to affect some people. We've got to have, of course, we all have to show some compassion to an extent. But I think the overall objective is to continue to do our work within the established rules and regulations, and that's the law of Guam. Now, if you're saying that we're, do I have to be compassionate? Yes, I have to be compassionate as well to problems, individual problems. We cannot move away from that. That's just the nature of things. We are all human beings. We have feelings. We have love, we have hate and all that. And hopefully, that as we go along in our journey here, that we're not going to be stirring up hate amongst ourselves. But I think I'm going into space here again. And so, I really believe that the important thing is that a person who is actually given a responsibility has to really understand what the responsibility are and try to perform their given tasks within that rules and regulation. You have to understand that you're a human being as well. There's going to be a lot of people that may be in a position where they can't help the situation that they're in, and we cannot be just so hard in dealing with this kind of issues that actually may hurt the individual and family. So, we have to be, I guess what I'm saying is that know your mission, know your rules that governs your boundaries, your extent of responsibility left and right. You don't want to cause any problem by overextending yourself to somebody's duties and responsibilities. So, within the parameter that's given to you, do all you can, be a good employee, have some heart because you are dealing with people. And always, always take a look at the evidence and information that you have before making any kind of judgment is my, and I don't know.
Well, I'm not going to belabor-
If I miss, ma'am, if I miss your thing, we can-
No, I, you know, I won't belabor further, Mr. Guerrero. I mean, I'm sure even in the private sector and running an operation, you have an expectation that employees perform their duties. I assume you have always had an expectation, even working in the private sector, that employees perform their duties.
Okay.
And that's an expectation certainly I don't think should be any different for the government of Guam. I think public servants have a greater responsibility to do so. And I'm just relaying that because that's the reality of how I see it. Like I said, I don't hold the commission high esteem. I really don't. I've seen enough cases and circumstances that really make me question the credibility of some of the members that sit and have sat on the commission with how decisions have been made because it's been politically influenced, and that's bothersome to me.
Yeah.
I would hope that individuals, I mean, I've gone to commission meetings where a commission member has actually had a written response already before a case has even been represented or argued, and sat through it and read their written statement, that I don't even know if they wrote it because their ability to articulate it on their own doesn't match up to the written statement. I've seen those type of abuses, and I've seen other commission members just sit there and let it happen without question. And that's bothersome to me, particularly when we have a responsibility to serve the public. Individuals are all important, but the collective mission to me is even more important. That's why we're supposed to be serving the public, and I hate abuse of that. I detest it. And I've seen it happen so many times. As long as you're politically connected, oh, we let it slide. And I just don't think that's right. I think everyone, you know, if they're being paid by the public dollar, they have a responsibility to perform their work and perform it responsibly. So, I certainly hope you keep that in mind because we sometimes lose sight of our bigger duties and our responsibilities to why we all sit in those chairs and positions that we have. So, with that, I wish you well. I look forward to seeing how you do with the commission with regards to decisions that are made moving forward.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Yes.
You're very welcome, Senator Brown. Before we close, I'd like to close and thank you, Mr. Guerrero, for truly stepping up to the plate and being a part of the membership for the Civil Service Commission. I want to thank the Governor's Office for sending your appointment down to our office and getting the referral out in a timely manner. I also want to take the time to thank all the support that you received today, those out there, more importantly. I know, just close for the record, I know you're probably closely related to my husband, but I will share that I know your better half for many, many decades. And I always say, behind every successful man, there's a wonderful, great, supportive wife, and in this case, truly. She's been in the government for a very long time and has been a very good writer. I've worked with her on several community projects, and I want to thank her also for her work. I also want to say that as I look at your resume and I see all your medals, the honor that you've received, the support of over 3,000 soldiers out there and frontline, being a part of the Green Beret, more importantly, the nonprofit organizations that you've been a part of, from the Rotary Club of Guam to the Chamber, to the nonprofits, the projects that you've worked with, the management studies that you've been, the Defense Language Institute, just being a part of the Green Beret, I think, was what impressed me the most, right? You would think that something, this kind of work that's very voluminous in nature in as far as reading, like Director Tulcap spoke about, the time that you will probably have to spend working with the agency. First, I want to say thank you to your wife for giving you the opportunity to serve in the government and to do this because it's basically doing it for free. I always say thank you for stepping up to the plate, for volunteering, because it's called labor of love. And something that also caught my eye, that you've been over two and a half decades, you've been with the Rotary Club of Guam for over two and a half decades. And, you know, when you look at the motto, right? Is it the truth? Is it fair to all concerned? Will it build goodwill and better friendship? Will it be beneficial to all concerned? As I look at that motto and I look at what you've represented for almost three decades, I want to say those are things that I can take to heart and truly appreciate. You talked about impartiality. You talked about your integrity. You talked about the work that you've done, both in the private sector and in the government military service. And, you know, this is a new arena, but you're willing to step up to the plate. I want to say, I'm going to give you my vote. I will. I will ask that our committee's expedition report this out because I think that Civil Service Commission could use a perspective from the outside looking and give a fair judgment to the cases and to the information provided to the body as a collective Board of Directors coming together with this Civil Service Commission. So, I'm really grateful and appreciative that you will take the time to do this, and that's why I'm going to say, "Be naio, undonklen si jus masit," and I'm going to give you a lot of the blessings that's going to be needed to do a lot of the hard work. So, with that being said, si jus masi, todos hamzoo. If there's no one left to testify, I will note for the record that Mr. Diaz said he's here to support but didn't want to present oral testimony, and that name was Jake Wu, who came by himself and said he also wants to share his support. So, we'll note that for the record. So, if there's no one else left to testify, the confirmation and hearing on the board appointment of Mr. Francisco T. Guerrero to serve as a member of the Civil Service Commission for a term length six years, October 1st, 2021 to September 30th, 2027, to fill the seat of Emilia F. Rice, whose term has expired. This confirmation has been duly and publicly heard. Individuals who wish to submit testimony will have to send it via email at senatormunyabarnes@guamlegislature.org or hand-deliver it to 163 Chalan Sancho Papa, Hagatnia, Guam, 96910. So, this board appointment is duly and regularly heard. We're going to go ahead and recess at this time and adjourn at 3:24 PM. So, undonklen si jus masi, hamzoo todos, si jus on benidisi, and happy Easter. Esta.